Well, good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation led by Dr. Achira Srivinas Vidala, priest of Hindu Temple of Oklahoma, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Thorin McMichael, Landon Duacek, and Samuel Sichterman, representing Scouting America PAC 177. Please stand as you are able.
Dear friends, namaste. I bow to the God within you. God is in me, and God is in you, and God is everywhere. It is the essence of Hindu religion. I'm going to pray. I'm Acharya Shrinivaswadala from Hindu Temple of Oklahoma. I'm a priest. Swastiprajabhya paripalayantam, nyayena margena mahim mahisha, gobrahana vyasubhamastonityam, lokasamastasukhinobhavantu, lokasamastasukhinobhavantu. May there be abundance for all. May leaders wisely protect the earth. May there always be well-being for animals and wise. May the entire world be joyful. Kale varshatu pajanyaha, prithivi sashashalinie, desoyam chobharagita brahmana santunirbhaya. May the clouds bring rain at the proper time. May the earth produce abundant food. May the land be free from famine. May the wise be fearless. Sarve bhavantu sukhi na, sarvesantu niramaya, sarve bhadrani pashyantu ma kashit dukkha bhavet. May all be happy. May all be healthy. May all experience what is good. May no one suffer. Asatoma sagamaya, tamasoma jyotirgamaaya, murchor ma amrutamgamaaya. Lead me from the unreal to the real. Lead me from darkness to light. Lead me from mortality to immortality. God blessings be with us always. Oh, God bless us. Peace, peace, peace. Shanti, shanti, shanti. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Vidala, and thank you, Thorin, Landon, and Samuel. All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we do have a couple of resolutions under Office of the Mayor. I'll make my way to the front. And if all the organizers and partners of our Champions Parade would meet me down front, that would be great. All right. Well, it took half the city to host the other half of the city on this very important and amazing day that we had, which I have unabashedly taken to calling the greatest single day in the history of our city. But it wouldn't have felt that way if not for the impeccable and perfect logistics and safety that existed on June 24, 2025. And so to learn a little bit more about how all that came together and to meet the people who made it possible, I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Thunder earned 68 wins, a Northwest Division title, and the best record in the NBA during the 2024-2025 regular season. And whereas during the 2025 NBA playoffs, at the start of the Western Conference semifinals, the Oklahoma City Thunder convened a small group to discuss the logistics of NBA championship celebrations, bringing in event experts, O'Neal Events. And whereas behind the scenes, the small team grew with each Thunder win and discreetly took on significant event planning efforts between the Oklahoma City Thunder, the City of Oklahoma City, Greater Oklahoma City Chamber, Downtown OKC Partnership, Visit OKC, Oklahoma City National Memorial and Museum, IMSA, and O'Neal Events. And whereas numerous city departments and trusts, including police, fire, embark, public works, utilities, parks, public information, mayor's office, and city manager's office, were intensely involved in the planning efforts. And whereas surrounding communities and the broader state provided in-kind public safety support, including the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety, Oklahoma National Guard, Oklahoma Highway Patrol, City of Yukon, City of Moore, City of Edmond, City of Tulsa, Oklahoma County, and Tulsa County, amongst others. And whereas the Champions Parade was held on Tuesday, June 24, 2025, with the route traveling through the heart of downtown Oklahoma City, starting in Midtown, past the OCU School of Law, Oklahoma National Memorial and Museum, City Hall Civic Center, John Rex Elementary School, PACOM Center, and culminating at Scissor Tail Park. And whereas hundreds of thousands of people came to downtown Oklahoma City with Thunder fans flooding the streets along the route, cheering with undeniable elation and congratulating the players up close. And whereas the championship parade ended at Scissor Tail Park with tens of thousands of Thunder fans coming together to hear from Mayor David Holt, Thunder players Jalen Williams, Jalen Williams, Aaron Wiggins, and Shay Gildes Alexander, and celebrate with the entire team. And whereas the Champions Parade saw the highest overall number of attendees for a single one-day event in city history. And whereas the 2025 Oklahoma City Thunder players teamwork, integrity, and authentic connection to our Oklahoma City community will forever live in our city's history and in our hearts, and we will remember the championship celebrations for decades to come. And whereas the logistical and public safety success of the Champions Parade on June 24, 2025 is a testament to the professionalism and excellence of the planning team and the many partners who came together to stage this unprecedented event. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend the Champions Parade organizers and all partners for their dedication and commitment to an unforgettable celebration of our 2025 Oklahoma City Thunder NBA World Champions on June 24, 2025.
Thank you. Well, you know, in the time between Game Seven and the parade, we would sometimes joke that we had just thrown this together on a few hours' notice, and people would chuckle. They knew that couldn't possibly be true. But I think only now do they really realize just how much work went into this. And, you know, and they certainly understood that after it occurred. It was the work, the professionalism, the excellence was certainly on display. And that's what we're celebrating today. I mean, we're only sort of partially celebrating the Thunder's championship. What we're certainly celebrating this morning are the champions who made this special day happen. This will be a memory that the people of Oklahoma City will carry for the rest of their lives. And the people up here made it possible, and we wanted to thank them for that. I don't know if there's anything else maybe that some council members would like to add. Come on.
I'll add, Mayor. Thank you so much. One, we live in a wonderful city. And what makes this a wonderful city is because of the people like you, who give your time, who give your talents, to creating this sense of unity and purpose that we have for celebrating ourselves and making this a great community. So I just want to say thank you so much for all that you give to make this such a wonderful place to live. So thank you for this event. I can tell you that every friend of mine brings it up all the time. It's still coming up. They talk about their kids going, how much of a great memory they had. So you've really done a great job just creating this great memory for this wonderful city. So thank you.
Yeah, to that point, I mean, people are still posting pictures on their Instagram like it happened yesterday, you know? Nobody wants to let go of it. Did you, anybody else?
I guess the thing that I want to point out, I've lived here all my life. And I remember when we landed on the moon. I remember soldiers coming home from war. I remember meeting astronauts that were a part of the program that were from Oklahoma. There has never been anything more exciting than what I experienced the day of the parade in Oklahoma City, and it's something I'll remember for the rest of my life. So thank you all very, very, very much.
Yes. Thanks to all of you for your contributions to what became quite the memorable day. I do want to single out one person on behalf of my mother, Joyce Cooper. As you all know, I do have a habit of arriving a little tardy to things. And I had sent an Uber to pick her up from Midwest City where she's retired and lives. She's 81, as I've mentioned before, so maybe you've seen her. We were supposed to get there right at the same time, and she got there before me. And I get a call from Zach Craig, and he says, "I'm with your mother," and "I'm going to take care of her." And, I mean, Zach, it is something she still talks about, because the Thunder are her beloved. And she was so thrilled, someone who dropped out of school in seventh grade back in the 1950s, idea that she would be riding in a parade with the mayor and council and the Thunder to be able to cheer on her guys. It wasn't just that. It was that truly there were people like you all who had helped make that event possible. You humanized it for us and our family that day, Zach. And I think that's what each of you brought in your own respective ways. And so I just wanted to publicly say thank you for what you did, and just thank you to all of you. So.
Zach exhibiting the heart for service that all the people up here possess. Well, this is a resolution, which means we need to pass it. I like your chances, but I still, we need to, we need to take the vote. So let's see if we can get a motion in a second. All right, everyone vote, I wish to vote aye. Passes unanimously. Well, thank you all again. I've got copies of this proclamation. I may or may not have enough for everybody. We will print more. I'll start with by handing out to all the people who don't work here at the city, and then we'll get some to the city folks. But thank you again on behalf of the people of Oklahoma City and on behalf of the council and the city manager, and just, just an amazing moment that we'll all remember. So thank you so very much. Let's hear it for this team. Okay, the other item under Office of the Mayor is a little more substantive. It's Item 3B. That's a resolution renaming our library location, known as Wright Library, to Stockyard City Library. This came as a request that has been passed by the Metropolitan Library Commission. As explained in the resolution, you know, Mr. Wright was a chairman of their board, stood for policies that no longer align with the values of our community, actually haven't for some time. And I also think there's, this is maybe more my thing than theirs, but I think there is also some great benefit to the branding of the library for it to be geographically named, which is how most of our libraries are. I'll just be honest, I've never set foot in Wright Library. I didn't really know where it was. I think that I might have if it had been named Stockyard City Library. That's the power of branding. So I think that that will make it more of an asset to Stockyard City, to the library system, and to our city. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution? All right, if not, let's bring it forward for a motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, items from council. Item 4A is a resolution approving travel expenses for Councilmember Carter, who is now a board member of the National League of Cities, to attend the Housing Supply Accelerator Summit in Washington in August. You're a board member, right? I'm remembering that correctly, right? Yes. That's very cool. All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with the necessary six affirmative votes. Item 5, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager.
We do not have any reports other than claims and payroll.
All right. Item 6, Journal of Council Proceedings. Items A and B, we can take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 7, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. We have listed on the agenda items 11K and 11L, which will be deferred to August 12. Mr. City Manager, is there anything else?
Yes, beginning on page two, there's one item that appears two places in the agenda on OCMFA, Item F. We're going to strike that item. We'll bring that back later. It's an agreement with Cleveland County, and they hadn't approved it yet. And so we're going to strike that item, bring it back again later. So OCMA F, and then on page 12, item, that same item is 9BW. Then on page 18, Item 11U1, Unsecured Structures. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item C, 1400 Northwest Third Street, the owner has secured. Item I, 821 Southeast 51st Streets, re-notify for a new owner. Item J, 2145 Southwest 60th Street, the owner has secured. Continuing on page 18, on Item 11V1, Abandoned Buildings, all of these items will be stricken. It's the same items and the same addresses on the previous list, so it's Items C, F, and G. That's all that I have.
All right. Item 8, Revocable Permits and Events. And we have Item A, Revocable Permit with the Susan G. Com and Breast Cancer Foundation for the OKC More Than Pink Walk on October 17 and 18. And we have Morgan Danker here.
Hi. So my name's Morgan Danker. I work with OKC Parks. The event organizer was unable to come this morning, had a family emergency, so I said I'd step in and talk a little bit about their event for them. So they've been at Bicentennial Park for many years now. They continue to have a one-mile and a five-mile walk, or sorry, a 5K. And this year, they've adapted that route a little bit with working with police. They're also working directly with the Civic Center to ensure that they have access to their building, as they have a 6:00 AM load-in on that day. So they are working together to make sure that the whole community has access to their spaces. So it's going to be on October 18, so it's a little ahead of time, but they're just prepping, getting everything ready. Do you guys have any questions about the event?
No, and I think anyone can jump in here with a motion. This is in Word 6.
Yes, Councilor Hammond isn't feeling well, and she reached out to me this morning, so I'll be carrying her zoning items later, so might as well step in and do that now as well. I'll move for approval. And it sounds like a wonderful event. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thanks.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, Item 8B is the ratifying, this is just an amusing item to me, ratifying and approving a permit for the 2025 Champions Celebration Parade. So if we failed this, did it never happen?
It didn't.
All right, well, glad we were this militant about keeping everything in order. All right, so I think we could just jump in, anybody who wants, on this item, approving a permit for an event that happened five weeks ago.
I move approval. No, it's controversial.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. There, everybody can now enjoy, enjoy the event, yeah, with, with a clean conscience. All right. We will, we will now recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have Items A through M, and we already struck Item F that we can take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCMPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have Items A through E, we can take with one motion. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council. We're on Item 9, the Consent Docket. There are no scheduled presentations. Is there anything that a council member wishes to pull out for separate comment or discussion or vote? I would also note Item BW here was already struck. Hearing none, we'll see if we can take a motion to pass the Consent Docket. A motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 10 is the Concurrent Docket. We have Items A through R, we can take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11 are Items for Individual Consideration. Item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval, rezoning 1, 2, 3, 8. 1238 Northwest 2nd from R3 and I1 to R3. Councilman Cooper, you're handling the Word 6 cases today?
Honorable Mayor, you're correct. And is the applicant present by any chance or anyone representing them? Or? Okay, well, then I will move for approval on behalf of Councilor Hammond.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11B is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 15100 North County Line from AA to R1. Councilman Carter?
No one signed up to speak.
They have not.
Okay. I've actually spoken with the applicant and the representative, and we will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item C is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 6300 Northeast 63rd from AA to PUD 2063. This was deferred from July 15th. And Councilman Pennington, we do have, someone signed to speak in opposition.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it'd be great to hear from the applicant. I know last time we had this discussion, two weeks ago, we were, we were needing the applicant, so, but we did have a good discussion. It'd be helpful, Marcus, if you would address some of the concerns that came from council, so particularly around the use of aerobic system. We want to hear about the whole thing, but talking about aerobic systems, there were concerns about the level of density around the, the use of those systems. I believe our neighbor, one of our neighbors came and spoke last time, specifically concerned a lot about environmental and infrastructure issues, so if you could just talk about all of those issues.
Yeah, absolutely. So this subject site, as I'm sure most of you are familiar, familiar with at this point, it's just over 90 acres. We've got 86 lots that we believe are very thoughtfully designed. We've worked diligently to create a plan that we feel is in line with the needs of the community. We've promoted sustainability throughout the project, and ultimately, we feel like this project will provide some long-term value to the city of Oklahoma City. As you've mentioned, a lot of the concern initially from a few of the residents in the area had to do with the lot size. We've reduced the lots, or we've increased the minimum lot size from half-acre lots up to three-quarter acre lots. One of the other changes that we've made was in regards to the sewer, which I'm sure nobody here has any concerns about, but if you do, we can address those. The first is that these systems, we went back and went through all of the concerns that were cited here and found that every single one of them had to do with the maintenance of the systems, particularly the lack of proper maintenance on the system. And our solution to that has been to centralize the maintenance of these systems by the HOA. So the HOA will now be the responsible party for maintaining each one of these systems. We're no longer going to rely on the individual homeowners to keep up with the semi-annual maintenance of these. Additionally, we've got a buffer that we've added as well as an easement for a potential future sewer line should services become available at a later date. So we've addressed that there. I also would like to say that I don't feel like any of the changes that we've made here are something that we've done as a result of feeling like our arm has been twisted. This is simply, as a means to do what we feel like is, is right. There's a genuine desire to develop in a way that we feel is most appropriate. That being said, I'm happy to address any additional concerns or anything that any of the residents or any of council has.
I don't know if any other council members have questions, but I do want to ask this. So it's divided into two tracks. One track is for a more intense multifamily purpose. The other track has the option of there being single-family or duplexes, et cetera. So can you explain, if you have, let's say I have a duplex on this three-quarter acre lot, does that mean that each unit, which in the case of a duplex would mean two units, does that mean that each unit gets their own septic system and, which would then create two different like spray fields, I guess, for the aerobic system?
So I think that's a great point to, to point out. So Track 1 does allow for a single-family duplexes, triplexes, quads, while Track 2 is reserved as a 55-plus community. However, regardless of whether the dwelling is in Site 1, is in Track 1 or Track 2, it's, they're all serviced by a single aerobic system. So each one of the systems are designed to handle the capacity of the, the occupants on that site. So that's taken into consideration, whether it's a duplex, a triplex, or just a single-family residence.
Any other questions from council members? Then I think we can hear from our neighbor and then we can just, let's make sure we can address those concerns.
Okay, Lori Turner?
Hello, my name is Lori Turner. I live at 6,000 Northeast 63rd. This development is, if you put it back up on the screen, it cuts me completely off away from all the wildlife, not to mention the concerns I've already brought up to the city council in the three prior meetings, including the Cedar Ridge mentally insane institution that houses adult and juvenile court ordered criminally insane. Plus, my concerns about the sheriff's gun range. It's like living in a war zone out there, and this addition's even going to be closer to the gun range than I am. And the gun range fires off 24/7, as early as 6:00 AM, as late as 11:00 PM, and it's constant. Plus, my concerns about the endangered species in that area, the Texas horny toad, the glass lizards, and my concerns about the Indian artifacts that are in that area. My brother used to dig up arrowheads there in the ravines that run through there. Plus, you've got a farm pond adjacent to there where two young youths were dismantled and sunk to the bottoms of the pond. Plus, you've got the Federal Morale Building buried on adjacent land also, which isn't fenced. I have got so many problems with this addition coming in, besides the fact that I'm a retired paint contractor. I've seen what these additions can do to lovely forest land. My sister is a retired realtor, so, you know, she also lives out here with me. And when my mother bought the land back in the 70s, one of the reasons we, she wanted to be out there away from everybody and be on a well, be on a septic tank, be on propane, and not have any of the city stuff is because she didn't want people moving in, building housing additions. Plus, the fact they originally wanted to come in with half-acre lots. You guys have allowed them to go up to three-quarters of a lot, where it's plainly states they're supposed to be one-acre lots. I have so much to say against allowing this out there. There's so many better places in the city that they could do this.
30 seconds remaining.
It's kind of like a slap in the face when I got burned out, August 30th, 2011, and the firefighter smiled in my face and he said, "You're 110% burned out," like as if he had done me a favor. This is what, same way I feel about this. I have been out there on my property since the early 70s. My neighbors have been out there since the 50s. Yes, it is a, you know, sporadic area out there where there's really not many of us. We enjoy the wildlife, we enjoy the area, and which the wildlife, as you see, that cut me completely off. My land is right there.
Ms. Turner, we're at time.
Out of time? Well, please vote no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you. Maybe, Marcus, would you mind addressing some of these concerns around, and generally, just putting on my old Planning Commission hat? We talk a lot about, Planning Commission traditionally deals with things like tree preservation, other attempts to preserve the natural beauty of the area, because that is the appeal. It is a beautiful area. I know, because my grandma lives nearby, used to live nearby for decades and decades, so I'm very familiar. It is a lot of wildlife, as Ms. Turner shared. Would you mind addressing those concerns?
Yeah, absolutely. So I don't think that there's anybody more committed to preserving the natural beauty of the land than I am. I live in the area currently. I've lived in the area of several of my last homes have been within a mile of, of this particular site. So I completely understand the concern that somebody would develop it in a way that's delicate, and I can assure Ms. Turner as well as all of the other residents that that's exactly what my intention is to do. I've met with most of the residents in the area. I shared with Planning Commission when we appeared before them that we went door-to-door and visited with as many folks as we could. Those we couldn't, I left my contact information. Ms. Turner was one of those. I feel like that we've tried to address the concerns as, as best we can. Some things, I can't really address some of the claims in regards to whether there are Indian artifacts that are buried or debris from the Mur building, things like that. I don't have particular knowledge of. We've done extensive surveying of our site. We don't show anything like that. So some of these things, while I'm sensitive to them, there's only so much that we can do.
That makes sense. I also received an email from a neighbor concerned that this would be low-income housing and the impact that that could potentially have on the neighborhood, particularly the one that is across the street. Could you address that?
Yes, unfortunately, there's a lot of misinformation that's gone forth, whether it's out of ignorance or malice, I'm not sure, but as I stated, I live in the area, so I've received some of these mailers or handouts that have, that have come through, some of them with seemingly counterfeit City of Oklahoma City stamps. But no, there's no affordable housing that's planned here. We do have a plan to make our housing more affordable. That's been a big complaint or a critique that we've had, is that while the products that we put out are nice and beautiful, that most folks can't afford them. So yeah, that's on our radar to make them more affordable, but no, this is not a low-income or affordable housing, or I think one of the last ones I received was a homeless. So a lot of these things are just being pulled out of thin air.
For Track 1, could you talk, I know that the zoning, I know there was extensive conversations of Planning Commission, so, you know, I want to be supportive of their efforts. Could you talk just a little bit about some of the decision-making that will be made around where there might be single-family versus the duplexes, you know, that? Could you talk a little bit about that mix in Track 1?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the whole idea, even in mixing these types of, of housing together, is, is creating a good community that offers something for everybody at whatever phase of life that they're in. So when we have, when we move to the quads or a triplex or something like that in Track 1, it's designed to be an alternative for those young professionals who may be coming out of a situation where they live with a roommate or something like that and want a soft transition into a homeownership. It's not something where they jump in and buy a house that they live in by themselves. This product allows the, the buyer, the end user, the ability to still have some of that same feeling, to have some autonomy in the sense that they have their own space, but they may be there with a friend or a couple of friends that they've gone to school with, grad school, something like that. Also, what this model does is it allows us to, to more accommodate, to better accommodate the needs of families in different points in their lives, whether that's divorcees, widows, things like that. So what we've determined is having a mix of those housing types there, particularly alongside of our 55-plus community, would be something that families could come in and see that they don't have to compromise or sacrifice anything having to do with their lifestyle to be in this community.
Any other questions, any questions from council members about it?
I've got a couple of questions. Excuse me, I hadn't realized we were talking about doing duplexes and triplexes on these different lots.
Yeah, so Track 1 does allow for one to four-unit properties. Track 2 is all-four-unit properties. Part of this was a discussion that we had early on with some of the planning commissioners in regards to reducing that lot, increasing that lot size up to three-quarters of an acre. It's not our intention that the entire development be duplexes, triplexes, and quads. It's simply as a result of being able to offer those various housing types.
And then, over here, this addition over here at, what is it, 50th to about 56th, what are those lot sizes, do you know?
I don't. My guess is that they're an acre.
And then when you talk about HOA taking care of maintenance on the septics, right? Would they also take care of repairs?
Yeah, so our plan is that the HOA would come in and be responsible for the semi-annual maintenance. That's the time where we anticipate any needs of the system that they would determine then. They would be responsible for making sure those repairs are taken care of. The cost of those repairs would be borne by the individual owners of those systems.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Could you speak to the ecosystem concerns that we heard? Like, well, I guess those would be two questions. The ecosystem in terms of, like, some of the creatures, I believe I heard the horny toad, there was a second one. That's one question I have. And then the second one is, what do we know, and maybe it's a city manager question, about the bombing memorial and its relation, or just the bombing in general, the Mur Building and its relationship to this land? I've not heard this before.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, so I don't have any knowledge of, of any, any portions of the Mur Building being on the site, but I can speak to the environmental, the wildlife portion of this, which is, we've added a 35-foot tree buffer around the entire perimeter of the development, so no trees to be removed in that portion. And even within the interior, I think it's important to note that our style of development is a little bit different than what you see from some of the larger developers. We're not a production home-building company, so this is not a scenario that you may be used to seeing around the metro where a lot of heavy equipment comes in and takes out all of the trees, paves roads, puts houses in, and then plants saplings in the yard. This development operates quite differently. This process, where our roads are carefully thought out, Richard has designed this with the idea of maintaining the maximum amount of the existing large mature trees that are on-site. Those, that's one of the biggest things that lends itself to not interrupting the ecosystems that are currently existing there. Probably the best example of this is our previous development on Willshire and Coltrane. If you drive through that neighborhood, you'll see all of those large mature trees, and alongside those, you'll see road runners, you'll see deer, you'll see turkeys, you'll see all of the wildlife that we currently have there. So I think that rather than me telling you it's important, that's something that, that's easily to be seen, it's manifested in the, the community that we have.
I can speak to the community that you've built, and it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? I think the main thing, Marcus, and I appreciate you answering these questions. I had a great conversation with one of our neighbors yesterday evening, talking about concerns around the density and especially how that is impacted by, excuse me, how the septic systems would be impacted by having multifamily. I am, I feel relieved to understand that it is not multiple septic systems, like for every single unit, but instead it's, it is one septic system that would serve that multi-unit, so that's helpful. My understanding also is that the minimum set by the Department of Environmental Quality, and I understand that it's up for debate whether this is sufficient, but my understanding is that that's a half acre for the use of aerobic systems. In this instance, Planning Commission asks you to go up to three-fourths of an acre. So I think it's important in this era of needing more housing in northeast Oklahoma City, in Oklahoma City in general, with us short tens of thousands of units, that it's important for us to have policies that support having, bringing more housing into our community. I'm especially in support of housing that has diversity of housing types, so that people can age in place, so that there's more accessibility for people across different incomes. And so that is something else that I think is important. I appreciate the address of those issues around the environmental issues, especially, again, around the aerobic systems. So with all of those things in mind, I, I am in support of this. And if there are no further questions, I'm going to move approval.
All right, we have, coming up, a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 11D is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 15095 North Sarah Road from AA to PUD 2068. Councilman Carter. And I should say, no one has signed up to any remaining zoning case.
Okay, thank you. Subject to the technical evaluations, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11E is an ordinance on final hearing. Item 11E is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval rezoning 9109 West Hefner from AA to PUD 2069. Back to you, Councilman Carter.
I've also spoken with the developer and the representative on this, and we will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item F is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval rezoning 2001 East Memorial from C3 to PUD 2070. Councilman Pennington.
Thank you. I've met with the applicant. I was honestly surprised that this plot of land was not already developed for residential. So I'm in full support and move approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item G is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval rezoning 3555 Northwest 58th from C3, O2, R1, and R4 to PUD 2071. Councilman Cooper.
And you said, "No one signed up to speak," but is anyone here? Yes, I know. And he's thrilled to get those steps in this morning. You see that grin? That's great.
Good morning. David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street. This is a PUD that would redevelop the office towers that are located along Northwest Highway and Hefner Parkway. I think they're called landmark towers, if I'm not mistaken. The kind of suburban office market has been really in a bad spot for many years. These buildings have stood at very low occupancy for quite some time. So my client is proposing to redevelop them as multifamily. I think it's a wonderful reuse of the property. It's obviously located right along a major corridor, as well as the bus rapid transit, so there was no protest at Planning Commission. It was recommended for approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Can you speak to the role that the historic, like, just?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, thank you.
So they're utilizing historic tax credits as part of this. And so as part of that process, it required us to get approval for our site plan from SHPO. So what we have done is, I don't know, Sarah, if you can show the site plan. There you go. So, you know, one of our goals was to try to maximize as much green space as possible, considering right now it's just nothing but asphalt and a sea of parking. So what you see before you is where we finally ended with SHPO. We had desired slightly more green space. What we were told is that the SHPO wouldn't approve the amount of green space we wanted because in their view, the sea of parking is, I can't even say it with a straight face.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is part of the historic fabric of suburban office market. And so we had to rein back in our open space, and this is where we ended up. I still think it's meaningful open space for the residents, but the historic tax credits are what's necessary to make this project happen. And so understanding that, we were able to push as hard as we could, and this is where we are, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's right, city manager and municipal councillor. And I, first, let me just express my incredible disappointment and dismay with that idea that sprawling asphalt, we must preserve it for historic reasons. I will go this far and say that it is that asphalt that is the historic problem we're reversing and must reverse. That is such a wild proposition that they said. So when I learned that, I was just truly horrified. So that's the first thing I want to say. Secondly, though, I want to commend David and his team. His name's Chelsea. Caitlin, sorry. I knew I was going to mess it up. And that's even after an espresso. Sorry, Caitlin. The, yeah, she's here. The thing I really want to commend them is just the attention to detail that they took to try and create walkways, pathways from building to building to building, along the building, along the entire site as well, to make it not just accessible for people who are walking around, but whatever their mobility might be, whether it's wheelchairs, et cetera. To me, one of the most significant aspects of this is its proximity to Rapid, so that someone can truly age in place and not have to own a car to be able to, for instance, leave here to get to Integris for a doctor's appointment right down the road without having to own a vehicle. I think that's critical. And I also applaud the affordable component that you all are working on here. So all of those things, I think, I'm going to be watching this development pretty closely because I think it's difficult to redesign something that was meant for almost like a suburban use to make it a bit more of the urban core, because this is right on the other side of that urban core, so it's a cusper. And so I'm going to be following this pretty closely to see how far we can get. And with that, I'll move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. All right, item H is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval rezoning 11300 Southeast 89th from AA and AE2 to PUD 2074 and AE2. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
All right. This is basically a lot split that ends up with a total of three lots, averaging a little over 2 acres a lot. So with that, I'll move for its approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item I is an ordinance on final hearing. Recommended for approval rezoning 6800 Miramar Boulevard from PUD 1962 and HNO to PUD 2075 and HNO. Councilman Pennington.
Thank you. This is just continuing some other industrial uses that are right near I-44. Nothing crazy here. It's pretty consistent with the other development that's immediately surrounding it. And with that, I'm happy to move approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item J is an ordinance on final hearing. Recommended for approval rezoning 3104 Northeast 82nd from PUD 771 C4 and AA to SPUD 1685. Councilman Pennington.
Thank you. I do want to hear from Mark quickly about this one. No one signed up to speak, right, Mayor?
Correct.
Mark, this has been a long, long, long journey on this rezoning case. I just want to say on the record, are there any objections from any of the neighbors? They're all related. They've owned this, they've owned this land, it's been in the family since statehood, so they take it very seriously. I know you've had very intense conversations with them. I just want to confirm, there are no objections from our neighbors about this, right?
Right. Mark Sitzow, One Hundred and Seventy Seventh Avenue. I believe so. We received email responses back in the form of thumbs-up emojis, so I take that as protest withdrawn. But the fact that no one's here, I think, is a good sign. And quick shout-out, Jessica Bloy in our office handled this application and really has worked on it the past seven months to get us to this point, so.
It's good. And I'll commend Jessica as well, because this was, it was a tough one to resolve. It is, the site plans changed innumerable times, so anyway, appreciate the effort.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, with that, unless there's any questions, I'm going to move approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, items K and L were previously deferred, which brings us to item M. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval rezoning 2509 North Walker from NC and HL to SPUD 1730 and HL. Councilman Cooper.
Yes, hi. Okay. Well, I think this will be just fine, and I will move for approval. Oh, and I do want to thank people who reached out to me to work with me on this one.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item N is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval rezoning 1300 Northwest 22nd from R1 and UC to SPUD 1734. Councilman Cooper, on behalf of Ward 6.
Yes, on behalf of Ward 6, I will move for approval, please.
Got a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. Item O is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval rezoning 830 Northwest 66 from R1 to SPUD 1735. Councilman Cooper.
Yes, would you mind coming up, Mark, and telling us a little bit about this project? I think it's a pretty neat one.
Good morning. Mark Sitzow, One Hundred and Seventy Seventh Avenue. So this is a part of town that has seen quite a bit of transition over the last decade from industrial to residential, back to industrial, and it continues changing what it wants to be. And so this site in particular is kind of that bridge between the lower-impact warehouse uses and a street of single-family homes. So our client on this property is an artist, is building a live-work unit where there's going to be a gallery showroom on the first floor and then a unit up above. So we've received no protests, staff recommended approval, and so did Planning Commission.
Yeah, I think it's a smart use of the land, and I'm also excited because of all the infrastructure improvements coming currently to Classen, whether it's bike infrastructure and then, of course, the proximity to transit. So I think this person's really thinking through their live-work space, and so I would move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item P is an ordinance on final hearing. Recommended for approval rezoning 1801 Northwest 14th from SPUD 1625 to SPUD 1738. Councilman Cooper, on behalf of Ward 6.
On behalf of Ward 6, I'd like to invite Mark back to the podium. Tell us a little bit about your project here.
Sure. Sarah, could you pull up the site plan? So this is a property that has been rezoned a handful of times, essentially for the same product, but tweaking it each time. These are more live-work units in the Classen Tenpen neighborhood, just a couple blocks south of the Plaza District, and immediately across from a larger multifamily mixed-use project that I think was just recently completed on the other side of Indiana. And so what we're proposing here is a series of duplexes with ground-floor retail, and staff recommended approval, and so did the Planning Commission.
Nice. Well, so too shall I, on behalf of Councillor Hammond.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11Q is an ordinance on final hearing. Recommended for approval rezoning 1701 South Mustang Road from PUD 1117 to SPUD 1739. Councilwoman Avers. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11R is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval rezoning 2801 South Mustang Road from SPUD 1474 to SPUD 1740. Back to you, Councilwoman Avers.
I'd like to take this one as well.
Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item S is an ordinance on final hearing. Recommended for approval, establishing a special permit to operate use unit 8250.7 emergency shelters and feeding sites in the I-2 district at 520 North Villa. Councilman Cooper, on behalf of Ward 6.
Yes, I don't see anyone. Okay, on behalf of Councillor Hammond, I would move for approval, please.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11T1 is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Any, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution found at T2 declaring that structures are dilapidated. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11U1 is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Any, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution at U2 declaring that structures We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. V1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those previously struck. Any, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution found at V2 declaring that buildings We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We have now a presentation on item W, which is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, amending the Oklahoma City retail incentives policy.
Kenny Sudle with the Economic Development Trust, or I'm sorry, with the Alliance for Economic Development and also my surrogate on the, will give us an update on these changes that we're proposing to the retail policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Kenny Sudle with the Alliance. Just very quickly, wanted to look at modernizing and updating our retail incentive policy. So this was adopted last in, I believe it was October of 2008, so almost 17 years ago. So just to start high level, and these things have not changed, but just as a reminder, you know, that our policy was set up to not be an entitlement. It was something that, you know, the goal of this was to support new sales tax through destination and regional type of draw or underserved area type of retail projects. The incentives should be performance-based and not exceed the new taxes that are generated. And the goals in the policy have not changed. The goals still say that they're to increase the tax base, better quality of life, provide merchandise and entertainment, attract other types of development, and to stop sales leakages to other communities. So a couple of things, there's a couple of really, I think, administrative type of changes, and then there's a couple of substantial, you know, policy-type changes. So just on the administrative side, one of the things is, in the policy, it references, because we're limiting it to retail, we used to use the old SIC, which is the Standard Industrial Codes, which were codes developed in the 1930s, focused kind of more on the way things are produced. Wanted to switch that over to the NAICS codes, which are the North American Industry Classification System, which is the system that's really used more to classify businesses these days, more on kind of what they do versus how they produce things. We wanted to clarify the application process. This is one of those things that runs through the Alliance, but the Alliance did not exist back then, so it's clarifying that the applications come through the Alliance. Of course, we work with the Joanna and the city manager, and we work through, there's a committee in here that takes a look at this, that has other city staff involved. This also clarifies that the incentives must be approved by the Economic Development Trust and the council. That's sort of been the practice, but it wasn't laid out in the policy. It clarifies also that the intent is to use the general fund portion or the non-dedicated portion of sales tax for the incentives. And so those are kind of some of the administrative things that are changing in the policy. So really, the big policy change in here, so previously, this, there was a couple of categories where something could potentially be eligible, and one of those was what we call destination retail. So previously, destination retail said you had to have $20 million of sales and have some products and services that are unique to the market, or, yeah, that was it, was just the $20 million in sales. So what we're doing, this is one of the changes, is that still remains, the $20 million with, you know, unique services and goods. We're adding also, if you just hit a threshold of $75 million in sales, and the thought being, you know, sometimes with these really large retailers, there gets to become some question about, you know, is this new? And you can kind of make arguments on both sides, but we just believe if you really have a retailer that's that large... But we just believe if you really have a retailer that's that large, we want them in Oklahoma City. We don't want them to go to another community where we start leaking sales tax. We also added in, under destination retail, the only non-retail category type of use that would be possible here would be to add basically what's, we're defining it as an entertainment-type use, a destination entertainment use that has at least $25 million worth of sales, and it has to be part of a mixed-use development. So don't know exactly what that is. There's probably a handful of things that might fit that. But increasingly, as we're seeing, retail centers develop with kind of more of an entertainment focus. And I will say, this is one we kind of struggled with. Where should we set that number? We kind of thought, let's try to leave that higher to attract really kind of the big destination type of entertainment things. But again, that would have to be something that's part of a bigger mixed-use development and not like a standalone movie theater or something like that. We also continue to still have in the policy, so that's the update to destination retail. There's still a category for what's called regional retail, which is something that has to be 250,000 square foot of usable retail space, and over half of the sales have to come from outside a 25-mile radius, so that's not changing. And then there's still a provision that 5,000 square-foot retailers who are in underserved areas or redevelopment areas are also potentially eligible for this as well. So those categories did not change. It was just this update of sort of adding the very large users and potentially some entertainment users that are part of a bigger mixed use. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We're also keeping the aspect that we're not going to be giving incentives more than what they pay in, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so I want to double check that.
So it's in the policy. You cannot give out more than what is new taxes generated. And in practice, and it says this also in the policy, we do studies, market studies with retailers when they come in and look at this. And we really try to determine what are the net new sales to the city. And then from that portion of the new sales, we may negotiate some of that portion going to that retailer.
Thank you. And it's probably worth pointing out, we have incentivized retail so rarely that you can still almost count it on one hand, correct?
Yeah, I was trying to think of, I think we've done like Costco, Cabela's, Von Mauer, some advertising for the outlet mall because it's a real regional draw. And sort of, I think, maybe kind of an, I'm not even sure if that was, it's so long ago. Bass Pro, it may have been a little bit different of a... But that's the intent, is we're trying to keep this to attracting some of those large, new-to-market type of things while balancing that with not having to incentivize every single thing that comes to the market. And I know that's, there's arguments both ways on that. But Oklahoma City, I think, is a big draw. But sometimes there are things that we're trying to get over the line as we're competing with other communities.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thanks, Senator.
All right, well, then we can take up the resolution. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, item X-1 is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority approving settlement of a subrogation claim on behalf of Colby Fairbrush. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11Y-1, our claim's recommended for approval. We can take items A through C with one motion. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That concludes votes for the day. Item 12, our comments from counsel, Ward 1.
None today, sir, thank you.
Ward 2? Ward 3? Ward 4? Ward 5? Ward 7? Ward 8?
Two things, Bill. You know, I've been on the council since 2015, and from time to time, on the consent docket, we get what are called donations, and we have to accept those with a resolution. And I always thought it was a shame that we don't acknowledge, when it's just a consent item, the person that made the donation. And it can be for beautification, it can be for parks. In this case, it's for animal welfare. There's a $10,000 donation, and it comes from the patrons of Oklahoma City Animal Welfare. So I'd like to thank them from the bottom of my heart for that $10,000 donation. Secondly, and I know the mayor's mentioned it a couple of times on social media and otherwise, but U.S. News and World Report ranks Oklahoma City as the best big city to live in. They praised us for our affordability, our short commutes, our cultural growth, and our new development projects. And so there's a great article on Channel 9. They called it breaking news. I believe it is breaking news. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes comments from counsel. Item 13, our citizens to be heard, and Katie Cops has signed up to speak.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Thirty-eight tickets, three managers, one big mistake. That mistake was putting 13 of those citations in my personal name. And today, I'm here to tell you why it should never happen again. My name is Katie Copas, and I stand before you not just as a regional property manager, but as someone who was personally incited 13 times by code enforcement while acting under the direction of employment of my former company. From day one, it was a denial due process, a violation of my rights under the 14th Amendment. The city placed legal responsibility on me for violations I had no authority to correct. This isn't just about citations. It's about accountability and the fundamental right to be heard. And after both the city and my former, after giving both the city and my former company months to resolve it, I was ignored. As of today, it's been 312 days since my first citation on September 20th, 2024. The legal pressure and personal risk ultimately forced me into constructive resignation after months of unresolvable exposure. I was cited, blamed, and left to deal with the legal fallout, while the ownership group remained shielded and my personal record and professional reputation were damaged. Imagine losing your job and your reputation after 16 years in the industry and nearly a year of your life, not because of something you did, but because of something you were wrongfully targeted. That's exactly what happened to me. I was a strong employee who showed up, stood up for the residents in a distressed, low-income housing community. I tried to do the right thing, even while managing a property already in foreclosure, dealing with violations that predated my employment. But once I retained legal counsel in May, the following occurred within 45 days. Code enforcement shakeup, HR restructuring. The presiding judge retired on June 30th, the same highly respected judge whose son I helped move in to the apartment community. Outside counsel was retained, effective July 1st. A new assistant municipal councilor position was posted just days after the CZ and W retainer took effect. During that same window, most of my citations quietly and methodically disappeared without explanation. And what's most troubling, citations were issued to employees' name and not the management company or the legal owner. On June 17th, the same day the retainer was approved here in city council, 10 out of my 13 citations were fully expunged.
30 seconds remaining.
An implicit admission of the citations were issued properly and issued, and yet the city continued to hold three citations active in my name. For the other managers, an additional 22 were expunged. I'll leave you with four simple questions. Why is code enforcement personally citing onsite apartment instead of legal owner? Why were 10 of my citations completely expunged while three remaining spread out and merely dismissed later? Why were 36 citations issued back-to-back in January to three different managers in less than 12 days? Why am I, as the former employee, having to retain an attorney and pay legal fees for code enforcement's mistake? What happened to me was not just wrong. It was a denial due process, and as many as you know, those protections are enforceable under 42 SC 1983. I urge this council to act, expunge the remaining citations and not just dismiss them, and review how code enforcement issues citations so employees are never targeted again. And after today, no one in this room can ever say they didn't know. Respectfully, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizens to be heard. I am 14, is adjourned, and we are adjourned.